Please raise your eyes for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our service men and women throughout the world. For our service men and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially William Donovan, who was retired Scranton police officer, Kim Candell, and Tim Linity. Thank you. Call, call, please.
Mr. King, Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here. Dispense with ready of minutes.
Third order, 3A, Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority, March 2025 meeting minutes received, May 1, 2025. 3B correspondence received, May 2, 2025, from BA ARPA director regarding ARPA quarterly report dated April 25, 2025. 3C Grow America Board of Directors meeting held March 31, 2025.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a couple. So I'd like to recognize or acknowledge a couple celebrations this week, today being Teacher Appreciation Day and also Teacher Appreciation Week. I'd like to thank my colleagues and all the teachers out there to do a great job, and I'd like to recognize them. Also, it's National Nurses Week. Again, recognize them for the great work they do. And again, this Friday is School Lunch Hero Day. I mean, when I was growing up, they were called lunch ladies, but I realize how important they are. My school, sometimes it's the only meal a child will get for the whole day, so I appreciate all their hard work. And also coming up Sunday is Mother's Day. I'd like to wish everybody a Happy Mother's Day and to all those that assume the role as a mother. And, you know, these guys can hang in there because Father's Day is right around the corner. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. Anyone else?
I also wanted to wish everyone a Happy Mother's Day. I'll be celebrating with my family. It's a special day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Hodeanis.
Joan Hodeanis, Scranton. I want to begin by sending kudos and compliments to the men and women of DPW. We seem to be entering a perpetual rainy season, which will probably last through the fall. But, you know, we had some heavy rains this morning at around 9:00, 9:30, as I was walking from Samters to the public library. I passed, of course, St. Peter's Cathedral. And what did I behold but a truck from DPW, a street sweeper, cleaning out Lake St. Peter, which is the flooded water, which tends to sit on Wyoming Avenue right in front of the cathedral. And they had taken the initiative, you know, because I have complained publicly. And by gosh and by golly, they were on top of it. I'm sure they went to other places downtown, because there were a few intersections which had backed up stormwater drains. And I say that because, you know, it was very appropriate that the caucus you had was looking at floodwater projects and going to need to be very sensitive to rains. I don't know how many of you remember about 15, 20 years ago when Meadow Brook overflowed in South Scranton, and we had this humongous car-eating hole in front of McCarthy's Flowers on Pittston Avenue? Do you all remember that? So, you know, I mean, obviously, we have a long history of issues with stormwater. Fortunately, we're starting to put time and assets and resources and thinkers against this problem so we can get a handle on it in the future. Speaking of DPW, are they still making progress on their collective bargaining agreement negotiations?
I had asked the administration, and they said they had provided four open days, so they're waiting to hear from that side.
This is for the contract?
For the contract.
Okay, good. At least we're making progress. As you remember, we lost the grant application for the BRIC program, and I know that the mayor sent correspondence trying to get that reinstated. Has there been any update on that? Have we had any positive feedback from the government?
Nothing back on that, Joan, but I believe we're like on Plan C now, so we're still trying to find that something.
Yeah, because I would like to see the victims of the September 9 flood made whole, and that was part of that plan, and we came so darn close.
No one's given up. We're still on it.
Yeah. Speaking of the Meadow Brook project, back in early April, we only had three of the 47 easements. Are we making any progress on obtaining easements for that project?
Well, I spoke about that Monday morning, and there were a few more coming in. I spoke to Morgan Fesbough about it, so it's moving, but it's slow.
Good. I think one of the city's priorities going forward is going to have to be stormwater issues. Unfortunately, prior administrations kicked the can down the road, but I think now we have to bite the bullet and address the problem as quickly and as professionally as we can. Okay, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Les Spindler?
Evening, Council. Les Spindler, City Resident Homeowner. I don't know if everybody's aware of it, but the temporary bridge on Green Ridge Street going over Lackawanna River opened yesterday. I go by there every day. It's been a pain. But I don't know why they had a big monstrosity like they did. I've said it before, I don't know why they had to take it over Naug Avenue. They should have had it coming out onto Naug. Would have been a lot less money, probably. It would have taken a lot less time, but what do I know? I'm not an engineer. Next thing, I heard on the news last night that PennDOT's closing the Parker Street Bridge to pave it for two weeks. It's going to take two weeks to pave that bridge?
There's other work they're doing. They have to do a lot of other...
The bridge isn't that long. It's a short bridge. Two weeks? I think that's ridiculous. Lastly, my favorite subject, because this guy just keeps giving me more ammunition every week, the idiot in the White House. He was on Meet the Press on Sunday and was asked if he had to abide by the Constitution as far as deportations are concerned. And he said, "Oh, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. Ask my lawyers." Well, you don't know about the Constitution? You're President of the United States, and you don't know about the Constitution? He's totally unqualified. Unbelievable if he has to have his lawyers asked about the Constitution. And what it says is, people can't be deported without due process. And all the people he deported never had their due process. He just wants to do away with the Constitution and have a dictatorship like his buddy Putin, because he wants to do everything his way. It's his way or the highway. All these people have voted for him, they'll be sorry. And even his own party is really getting upset with him now, too. I saw somewhere on the news last week that the GOP is upset with him, and he's losing a lot of members, and he's blaming that on Joe Biden. Joe Biden's been out of office for months, and he's still blaming him for stuff. If Joe Biden was still in office now, we'd be better off than we are right now, because the economy's tanking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Bob Bowles?
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. First off, you know, we keep seeing about our hospitals here. What is wrong with all of us that we can't find a way to either make it employee-owned with state and federal funding? Why do we have to be looking for a buyer? Are we that incompetent in this area, in the business field, that we can't manage two hospitals, and we need somebody to come in and tell us how to do it? We have the medical college. You have state and federal people that work out of this area, congressional. They could come up with the funding to save these two hospitals, upgrade them where they need to be. Instead of making us look like fools, we need to find a buyer. And that really turns me off, that this is what we're turning into, when we see other hospitals here growing like crazy, yet we can't do any other one that needs our help to keep us alive. You know, I just filed two federal lawsuits to prevent the congressmen, senators flying to El Salvador to bring back the scum back to our country, to prevent them from using our money to fly there and come back. If they want to go there, let them do it out of their own pocket. But you don't use our money to bring scum back into this country that Joe Biden brought here with the millions he let in here. I want to see the signs down. Why are we honoring him for what he didn't do? Because he didn't do a damn thing for us. I'm asking council tonight to put a motion, somebody here, make a motion to take those signs down, put it back to Spruce Street and the Central Scranton Expressway. He's not a guy that needs to be honored by us in Scranton. Everybody driving on that interstate thinks us fools are backing Joe Biden, and we believed in him. And that's ridiculous. We need to turn around and thank President Biden, or, yeah, thank Biden for bringing all the scum here, but President Trump for getting rid of it. And God bless him for what he's doing for the American people, that one young lady or one kid isn't going to get raped or murdered thanks to what he's doing, that we're taking the scum off the street. I think we need to open up here at the Scranton Police Department, give them the assistance our police need, and open an office for ICE. Send them an invitation that they are welcome in Scranton. The idiots in 44 last week where I went to the protest, protesting an office for ICE down there. How stupid could you be to protest who's going to clean up the scum and make this America, make our area safe again? You know, I looked at the mayor playing cricket. There are seven pools to swim in in Portland, Oregon. I spent a lot of time out there. And what do we have here? We don't even have a swimming pool. Naug, all you had to do was take it and grout it and fill the holes, do the maintenance that needed. But we're too stupid to do it, because our engineers don't know what the hell they were talking about, and people made millions on the stupidity of the leadership. So we got to make that change. You know, I was running for mayor here in Scranton on a write-in, because a rhino named Charlie Spano filed to get me off the ballot. But as incompetent it could be, he filed under a 2021 lawsuit instead of 2025, and the sitting judge said it was a typographical error. Under the rule of law, it should have been immediately thrown out, not act as his attorney instead of being the judge. We have the appeal. I'm going to get my expungement, and I will be able to take the seat by the time November comes around, so I want people to know that. The other thing I look at, I've done how much in the area? The outreach in Scranton, I gave 150,000 in Wipes, Clark Summit, Weston Field, all 150 each. And I look at all the people that are running for office and say, where the hell were you for the last year, last two years before you decided to run for an office? What have you contributed here? For 31 years, I've held a Christmas Day dinner on Christmas Day. Where was the mayor? Where was the other candidate? I'm talking Republicans and Democrats. What have you done for the people, other than come out and say, oh, we want this, we want that right now? What did you get? The Scranton Times won't put my picture in, because I'm writing as a writing candidate. But they'll wish, when I do take the seat as mayor in Scranton, which I will, there's no game playing. Scranton will be a new city, and our police force will be second to none. You won't want to come to this city and commit a crime or be an illegal, because you'll be taken the hell out of here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here is that the problems with the Scranton hospitals goes back to Governor Casey when he closed the Scranton State General and all the state hospitals. And as far as Moses Taylor and Regional, to be honest with you, I think they should close them both. I really think the answer goes in a different direction. I just think that they've been just so depleted of staff and equipment, and we've had a city that just looked the other way and continues to do that as the city falls apart. And I think the residents are responsible for where this city is, because they've elected all these governments. Moving on to, I think it's important, like I said last week, to keep people in the loop. I did a deposition with Attorney Hinton, and I, you know, in the course of the deposition, he managed to come up with a request they made of the mayor to send legislation up to council to restore the public access channel from an educational government channel back to its original format of being a public access channel, you know? And he also has the request that I gave to ECTV to sit down with their board and have a discussion with the board about what had happened to ECTV as far as locking me out of the studio and removing videos. So I think we had a very productive meeting. It's like I told Attorney Hinton, I don't think he has a case, but he's been at law for 34 years, so, you know, take that with a grain of salt. I'm only a truck driver, but, you know, a small part of my case might be built on the 14th Amendment, but, you know, the sad part that these people in this city have to realize is this, that your government, your council, and your mayor changed the format of ECTV. So if it was in its original format, which the city collects a $1.6 million franchise every year from Comcast, and the city has just squandered all that money away as far as I'm concerned, but we're going to figure out where that money went pretty soon, as soon as I do my petition to the court. But, you know, the very sad part is that we're having discussions about the two city hospitals. Mr. Bowles spoke about them. While the dean of the medical college came and sat down when I was a member of the tax group, we had a wonderful conversation. And, you know, we could have a lot more vibrant conversations about a host of issues inside the city, but there's only one problem. The elected officials, they can't let that channel function as a public access channel, which means your council members, your mayor, your elected officials in the county, they've got a muzzle speech. And when you look at the onset of the public access channels in the early '70s or late '60s, the whole reason for those channels to exist was to give the residents an opportunity to highlight issues in their communities that they needed addressed, but we don't address them here. We don't address the decaying infrastructure. We keep talking about blighted houses, but, and the thing that's driving this plight is the government. It's the council, and it's the mayor, and it's the waste of grant money. And they don't want to hear from the people. Everybody wants to get elected to council, or the mayor, or the school board, and they want to run everything. There's only one problem. They get elected to an office, have no idea what the problems are, and have no idea what the solutions are. So then Harrisburg says, will we have a grant for this? The federal government says, will we have a grant for that? They muzzle the neighborhood groups, the few that still exist, and we end up with the mess we have in this city. And as you can see over the course of time, the council members never speak or never answer a question. And it's very simple why. They can't. They wanted to get elected. They had their parties. They made a ton of promises that they can't keep, and they're not competent. And the only way they can stay there is by throttling the public in the city, the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Dave Dobson?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. It came to my attention within the last two days on hospitals that many hospitals in many areas have not been paid for Medicaid payments since first 31st, 25, when there was their due date. Now, this is like Hawaii. There wasn't one hospital that was paid anything for Medicaid services, and it's going on around the country, so you wonder why you have problems. Sometimes the problem is the people we vote for. Don't blame me. Okay, I get a little tired of these accusations up here, and I have to object to people being called scum. You know, there's always a couple criminals somewhere, and I notice with poorer people moving into the area, a lot of them are actually not from Central America. They're like Puerto Rican, and they're poor, and, you know, you get in the spats, domestic spats, and some of them get carried away. That's what a lot of our police calls. I read them every day in the paper when somebody gets hauled off for some kind of violent behavior. But anyhow, we're losing migrant workers and everything else, and we're not replacing them. You know, I don't need a job throwing watermelons up on a truck six feet or catching them or picking them or whatever. It's not a job I could even do right now. I'm 71 years old. But potholes, once again, we need to divert somebody possibly from code enforcement, even inspect immediately after they're repaired and six to 12 months later, and require these people to return. Don't trust somebody from Wilkes-Barre or the water company, because it's always a dandy job when they're done. And on tax exempts, once again, and we need the cooperation of the tax exempts to come with us and get an organization, non-governmental, and get to the state, and it's time. They really can't just use the Constitution to pile in tax exempts and constantly take property tax losses. And I'm concerned about the pension and stocks and bonds, five trillions lost, and that's a conservative estimate over this tariff nonsense. And by the way, a tariff is just a sales tax that you, as the consumer, will pay, and that's it. It's not going to replace massive tax cuts, so I think what they're going to do is hold the social programs hostage, and, oh, well, now you're going to have to leave us deficit spend, or you can do without the social programs, because the tariffs aren't working. And just a few days ago, five million, five million student loans were turned over to collections, five million of them. And that will ruin these college graduates' interest ratings, and it'll ruin their credit ratings and mess up their lives. There's seven or eight million people have money deducted out of their social security because they owed on a loan that they'll never be able to pay. They got conned into 57 or 59 years old going back to school, and they built up a big hoopla of a loan, and it's really ridiculous. They'll never be able to repay it, and they just won't fit in. The only good news I heard is Elon Musk is headed back to China, and I hope he stays there. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Lynn LeBruski?
Good evening, Council. Lynn LeBruski, Scranton resident homeowner, business owner. So I just wanted to start off by saying that I was able to attend the fishing derby over the weekend. It was fantastic. It was a real hit. The weather held off. It was pretty good. And although they didn't get the showmobile, they ended up having to rollback-donate it, so it worked out. The kids had a really good time, so that's a great event. If anybody ever gets to attend that, they do it every year. It's been going on for about 18 years now. And that all is due to the volunteers with the Park Place River Association. I also wanted to mention real quick that there is a benefit on Saturday, the 10th, from 4:00 to 8:00 at the St. Mary's Center. And a friend of mine I went to school with, his name is Jimmy Locker, he's battling colon cancer, so if anybody's interested in attending that benefit, that would mean a lot. And then somebody reached out to me and said that the light on Lackawanna in Wyoming is backwards, so when it says "walk," the light's green. So I don't know if anybody can check that. That was Lackawanna in Wyoming. And then I wanted to bring up some of the potholes where the intersection is at Luzerne and Main, but in driving over here tonight, and I don't know if that's PennDOT or the city, if it's PennDOT, maybe somebody could reach out to PennDOT, but you kind of have to swerve over into the other lane to, you can't go straight, or you're going to break an axle. But then coming over here tonight, I didn't get to go home. I had to come straight from work, so Lackawanna Avenue, I mean, what is going on? Can we get that paved or something? It's like a main artery to Scranton, and it looks like crap. Is there something we could do about that, or? Any word on Lackawanna Ave? Okay. All right, I'm just going to move on from that one. So then, the other question...
Dr. Rothschild, we reported on that in fifth order. She hasn't...
Because, I mean, it's bad. It's like a war zone driving through there, and you can't swerve. There's no swerve pattern on that road, so... But I did have another question. So the street sweepers, how many do we have?
One.
One. Do they only do downtown, or?
No, they start every day at downtown, and then they go to the section where they're supposed to go to.
Okay, because I've seen many, many streets that really need to be swept. And a couple weeks back, I seen a street sweeper downtown, but aren't you supposed to, like, remove all the vehicles when you do that and put no parking signs? Okay, because I literally, I have it on video, but the street sweeper was kind of weaving in and out of vehicles, and it didn't make much sense to me. It seemed like a waste of resources. And then the other thing... And then the other thing I wanted to mention was, I don't know if anybody out there is aware, but the local paper did an article on Sunday regarding the four ballot candidates for the upcoming mayoral election, which is in two weeks, May 20th is the primary election. And for some reason, they decided to omit one of the candidates' photos, and that was myself. So that was pretty disappointing. It felt to me like election interference. There were many people that reached out to the editor, and including myself, the editor has yet to get back to me. So it seems like between the ballot thing that happened with the county, and now my photo being eliminated from the local newspaper, something's going on there. I would have expected the paper to reach out to me, maybe with an apology, but like I said, not even a return phone call. But the way I'm approaching it is that no weapon formed against me shall prosper, so I'm going to keep calm and carry on. They did take the liberty today of printing a correction in the local paper, and they decided to put my photo right below the obituaries. So my husband was concerned I might not be alive, but here I am. And, you know, maybe that's a good thing, because a lot of people read the obituaries. I'd still like to hear from the Scranton Times, so if they're watching this, or anybody can talk to them, I'd still like an apology and maybe even an updated article. I don't think I got fair press like all the other candidates. But, you know, if anybody out there is wondering, I'm not dead, my campaign is not dead, it's very alive and well and thriving. So, again, Republican candidate on the upcoming ballot for the mayoral election, May 20th. And that's about it.
Thank you, Lynn. The Lackawanna, Wyoming traffic light, you said it's green, and then the cross?
Yeah, so the gentleman that reached out to me said that when you hit the button to cross, it says "walk," but it's when the light's green, not red. So it's not matching up with the?
Mr. Voldenberg, will you?
It's backwards, in other words.
Have traffic, please, if they could look at that?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Good evening, Council. Mike Mancini, Scranton.
Mr. Mancini, can you state your address?
Sure. 506 North High Park Avenue, Scranton. Less than 324 hours until the polls open for the 2025 primary election. The election cycle is critical to our future of our electric city. This primary will determine who, in the eyes of the voters, for both Scranton City Council and Mayor are best suited for the future. Four years ago, our city witnessed during COVID one of the lowest voter turnouts in the history of Scranton. This time around, I hope everyone will pick up their heads, open their eyes, and look and see how much our city has changed over the last four years. Appearance is so important at every level. Great appearance allows our city to draw good people to our city who mean well. Let's face it, COVID changed many things. Wouldn't them be in the ability to make ends meet? We have received our share of families and individuals from other cities and states because the cost of living is lower here than their former situations. When you have new citizens introduced to our city, appearance means everything. We have the worst roads and infrastructure in my lifetime. Mayor is pleased with bulldozers and cranes in an election year. To her, it shows progress. To the rest of us, it shows laziness, because these projects should have been done in previous years at a lesser expense. We now have four less deep-end pools, but to her, splash pads will get her reelected. When you continue to take things away like slides and diving boards, children have less to do. We now have gang activities in our schools, over 300 are gang active, with the youngest being only nine years old. Our neighborhoods are now increased with blight, many condemned in unsafe homes, waiting for years to be demolished. Scranton Police Department has received more pressing and challenging calls. I was honored to speak in front of our unionized employees, Scranton's bravest. I asked them a question, how many of you have been out to a call where someone passed away from an unwanted opioid-related death? Eighty percent of them raised their hands. You can tell the look on their faces that it sticks with them daily. City Hall is closed for the most part to visitors with a phone call and double-lock doors as the answer to growth. She takes credit for ending Act 47, our distressed status. She had nothing to do with it other than to sign some documents. The sale of Scranton Sewer Authority was the catalyst. She has pushed legislation to allow studies that include a holistic approach to crime. Another had singled out veterans as a major factor in crimes. And soon, to downtown, if she gets her way, that walkability study will replace traffic lights with stop signs. She may want to get out and do a driveability study to see the things that she took away. Her laziness has created other things that she flat-out broke. Cricket, pickleball, cutting ribbons in different cities other than ours, and splash pads are more important to her than our roads. Growth within our city, good paying jobs. We have homeless children, homeless women, veterans, elderly. We had a homosexual predator homeless down at Weston Field. Nature of our police calls and oversight appearance is lacking. To the mayor, I hope that Bob Sheridan beats you in two weeks, so that we can talk about the problems that you have created and how to properly address them, as opposed to campaigning against you, with you being the problem. In the meantime, quit breaking things. To the one who is the incumbent running for reelection at council, this all happened on your watch. You too are part of the problem, not part of the solution for our future. For the council president, who may get a little overzealous and run for councils and independent, that would be a major insult to the good people of Scranton, who know exactly what you are about. Cater to a party of one, rubber stamp with nothing to offer, less than two weeks from now. Decisions have to be made. If you're sick of square patterns, your current climate, get out and vote. Mayor doesn't know, the mayor didn't know that one of her campaign flyers, full of lies, had a picture of a park in South Edmonton Township. She mass mailed it. What's her fascination with Adamantons? Arrogance will be her downfall. Everyone loves an underdog. I only need one opportunity to take down page in the machine for the good people of Scranton. Change is coming. Good evening, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mancini. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Rick Little, Scranton, Pennsylvania. I just handed the council and the attorney and everybody the PHA plans. Every five years, there's a chance for people to have a say in what happens here. I thought I put something in in 2019, and it's supposed to become part of the record, but I guess it didn't. I included three letters that I wrote to Carl Winott, and he's the executive director still of Scranton Housing Authority. Scranton Housing Authority really doesn't have much to do with Scranton, except the mayor gets to appoint a board member. I've included in what I got here, it was a notice on their window that I, you know, that I'm supposed to be able to get this at the library, and oh, they sent it to the children's library, just all this stuff. And even looking at it, it's very confusing, you know, it's their plan for housing. They get millions and millions of dollars for housing, and this is the thing to keep it going. I also included in this my question to AI about, you know, how to answer this. I hope somebody answers this, somebody in the government, because it's a problem across the board with the Home Rule Charter, with the judicial branch of government. And it, you know, it's really coming to a head. Mari Kelly isn't running again to be the clerk of the court, but I was evicted by this court system, you know? And a lot of people, probably thousands of people were evicted, and looking at this paper, they say, you know, they talk about the Tennessee. I mean, I was evicted after 14 years at Scranton Housing Authority, and I fought them for four years, and there's no record of what Judge Farrell evicts people from Adams High Rise. There's no record, there's no clerk record, you know? I go there, and they say, well, she's not my own clerk. I go to Lackawanna County, you know, after seeing Matt Cartwright with a FOIA thing to say, you know, we have to see what they're doing judicially, because what they're doing judicially in the county and the city is crazy. I mean, Mari Kelly is again under the auspices of, you know, I guess Judge Neal, and, you know, our whole government is run by the judiciary in the Home Rule Charter. There's something wrong with that. I'd like to announce that one of the commissioners, Chris Schirmack, is having a public meeting at Lackawanna College Auditorium at 5:00 PM on Monday, May 10th, to talk about it, because there's really nobody talking about anything, not talking about the public housing, you know, they talk about the homeless, and, you know, what the police are going to do about the homeless. But it's just the fact that Scranton Housing Authority has hired many police officers, it's run by the district attorney's offices, and, you know, who works there and who doesn't? It's under contract, and, you know, it's something no one understands. It's the law. Somebody has to get on top of the law in this area. The five-year plan of the Public Housing Authority five-year plan, that's the only place, you know, it comes in from the federal government to the county every five years, and this is confusing as hell, reading it, you know, it sounds good, but when you put into the thing, you know, what's happening with park gardens, and they talk about, oh, it would cost too much infrastructure to fix up, that's what they're talking about. But this can't go on like this. People have to start realizing what is really the constitutional thing running the government. And in Lackawanna County and Scranton, it's the Home Rule Charter, and it's totally unconstitutional. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Anyone else?
Good evening, Scranton. Mark Mark Gavage. First thing I just wanted to point out was, I see the windows are still under construction, but behind Mr. Voldenberg, it keeps getting worse and worse. Is there any other secondary damage happening inside City Hall? Just for everyone to see that before we issue the final check.
No, that was before with the leak we had above?
It wasn't, because I could see old videos from '23. But anyway, you could go back and see it yourself. But I wanted to ask anyone, are you familiar with a grant that was offered to the city for gunfire, like triangulation, where it could triangulate where gunfire was shot from? Anyone familiar with a grant that was offered to the city? I heard it on a local podcast, and I just found it interesting. It sounded like it was an all-paid-for grant, and the city may have turned it down. I'm just asking if anyone has any knowledge of that. I know it didn't come in front of you, because you didn't vote on it, but no one?
How do we call?
No? Okay. I also saw something on the Scranton government page about electronics recycling on May 17th. Does anybody know who's actually running that program, or are you aware of it at all? It's going to be held at the Scranton High School?
Electronic recycling? Normally, it's a county program every year.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure it was on the city's website, I wasn't sure. But anyway, I saw some of the prices, and I was a little shocked, because I just, I took one up in Wayne County on April 26th, it was $25 for a carload. And some of the TVs, I think the TV might be $25 for 27-inch and below, 28-inch and above is $65, or $60, something like that. You know, air conditioners are $20, $30, where you could actually take them to Stanton's and get 15 cents a pound. I just found it interesting, I was just wondering if anyone knew anything about that program. But, no? Okay. Well, anyway, the last thing we'll talk about was the city hall being closed. I know when Dr. Rothschild mentioned the three items, in the debate, the mayor only mentioned two. She didn't mention government operational efficiency, but I don't think anyone could agree that keeping the public out is operational efficiency. I think it's deficiency at that point. So I don't really think that's a really valid excuse to say we're more efficient. And look how efficient you guys were when we had a debate that night. You guys were out of here pretty early, you know? You probably wish you had something every Tuesday night to keep people away. But the second thing was the confidential files. Everywhere we go, there's confidential files. We go to a bank, we go, so that's not accurate. Just because you have confidential files, you can't close it to the public. But it's also ironic, and Mr. Coin's not here, but they put files outside, and they're going to claim about confidentiality. It's mind-blowing to me. The last one is, obviously, they're concerned about guns. Now, in the debate, the mayor did speak about how, you know, we can't just, you can't search anyone at the door. You don't have the right to do that. You don't have the right to take away their gun, no matter what. But we do have the right to redress our government, and we do the right of press, and we're not allowed either. I do find it, like, inside the building, behind the doors, we should be able to come back here. So I do find it interesting that there's four employees that don't have that protection, but yet the mayor is still going to contend that it is for everyone's safety, so I just question, what about those four employees that are in the licensing inspection department? They don't have any safety. It's only plexiglass, that's not bulletproof glass. But I guess that's all I wanted to say. And just one more question, you guys could all answer it in fifth order, and ladies, certainly, the ordinance is applied to everyone fairly, even if you're in a position of government or just a citizen. Thank you. If you answer that, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. Hang on a minute. Last week, I had some preemptive questions about pave cuts. We do have a meeting coming up on the 13th. I asked about the protocol for smaller contractors doing pave cuts. I asked about using subcodes when those smaller contractors are doing work under utility companies, and then how the permanent information is given to the inspection company. So I was told by the administration that any work in pavement or right-of-way requires a permit regardless of the contractor. One call system assists in identifying the smaller work that may require a permit from those independent contractors. The utility company, when it comes to permits, they put out the permit, and they list any of those subcontractors. The subcontractors are working on behalf of the utility, and therefore, they're under the jurisdiction of the PUC law. When it comes to the inspection company, the inspection company has an account with OpenGov, and they are explicitly tied to the workflow and complete assignment work as it gets assigned to them automatically. So we'll have some questions for that company when they come in on the 13th. In regards to Meadowbrook and Caucus tonight, we heard from the engineer as well as our project coordinator, there's some updates that are going to go into that Meadowbrook project, and the city has given them to the State Department of General Services. So at this point in time, the administration is waiting on the State Department of General Services, and once they get that approved through them, they will share those updates. In regards to DPW contracts, I know there's some dates that were put out. There isn't any meeting scheduled at this point in time that I know of for negotiations, so that's...
So that's, we're still waiting for that. Mr. Voldenberg, I have a couple of requests for updates. We talked about Ferdinand Street quite some time ago on the 24th of March. It was, I had asked about an update from Eileen Cipriani about where we're at with, with the paving of Ferdinand Street and they let us know that it was out for bid. So can we please just request an update from the business administrator? These residents came to council, they spoke to us directly and the city responded to them and if we can get them an update, it would be great.
I'll follow up, Mr. Schuster. It is on the paving list. A request was placed on the paving list.
Thank you.
I'll follow up though.
Thank you. Another update, last, I've asked for several updates about the HUP test, but if we can get an update on where we're at with the HUP test, I know the last time they said the county had a letter that was going to be sent out, but it hadn't been sent out as of yet. So if we could see where, where we're at with getting that.
There is some movement on that. I'll get a status.
Thank you very much. Tonight in caucus, we heard about our disaster code 4408, which was a FEMA and PIMA disaster code that was caused after the storm in 2018. So it was nice to hear tonight, since 2018, that's finally going to be closed out. Most of those projects are completed. It's been something I've spoke about consistently here since I started on council. As we had many deadlines that were approaching at the end of each year and the city got extensions, they spoke tonight that the last project in that was the Elm Street retention wall behind South Side Bowling Lanes. It's a flood wall that was, was replaced and that was the last project before that disaster code 4408 is closed out. I did give Mr. Voldenberg a copy of the holiday schedule for trash and recycling and yard waste collection. And if you can just get clarification, so for Memorial Day, Monday will be off for Memorial Day and there will be no curbside trash recycling and yard waste collection that day. It's going to pick up, what was originally scheduled for Monday is going to pick up, this document I have here says states Wednesday, but if we could just get clarification, we have enough time between now and Memorial Day that we can get that out so the residents know what pickup days are going to be for the week of the Memorial Day holiday.
I made note of it. I'll find out tomorrow.
Thank you very much. And then the last thing I have is I'd like to thank Riley Engineering and members of the project team. There's stormwater projects, the city is doing a large stormwater, $24 million, give or take, in stormwater updates in the city. And the project team was kind enough to come out to the Fawnwood area in Kaiser Valley to do a walkthrough with the neighbors on phase one of that. So a lot of those neighbors came out to do a walkthrough of their properties as to what is to be expected and what work is to be done. And many, if not most of the neighbors were very happy with getting their questions answered. And I will say that, you know, taking, the administration and our engineers taking the time to explain to those residents where they're at goes a long way to attaining those easements and working smoothly through these, these projects. So I would like to thank Riley Associates and the project team for coming out to those residents in Kaiser Valley to explain those, those stormwater projects. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. First, I wanted to bring up something that Ms. Hodowanitz was discussing about the flooding that happens downtown in certain intersections. There is one that I noticed that I believe has been brought up in the, in the past, but I don't recall any answers about it. And this is over at Penn Avenue and Biden Street. And it's, it's right where someone would need to use the handicap accessible curb. And so someone wouldn't be able to because they'd be trenching through a lot of water with their device or wheelchair. So I had brought it forward to Mr. Voldenberg and he's going to bring it to DPW. One of the problems is that there's no sewage drain there. So perhaps if there was a drain, then, then the issue wouldn't exist. So I'm hoping one could be added there. But if there are any other intersections that perhaps don't need a drain and that's the cause of the water collection there, then please make us aware and maybe we could get them all covered in one, one summer. That'd be great. And speaking of curb cuts, while Riley and Associates was in today, I did ask them afterwards regarding the curb cut that we've been asking about at Colfax and Olive. And I was told that the design should be completed within a week. So they've been in the design process and then they'll get back to me in terms of the timeline, when they anticipate that it'll, it will actually be completed. So it sounds like we're moving further along in the steps, but it has been taking quite a while. So I was glad that I had the opportunity to ask them about that and just wanted to provide that update. And there was a question tonight about Lackawanna Avenue, which I'd also brought up last week and in previous weeks, the paving that needs to happen on that road. And I also discussed that with Mr. Voldenberg, who had said, last we were told it was going to be done within two to three weeks or at least the paving would be started. And we're probably at three and a half weeks now, so we're going to check in on that and find out why that hasn't been started yet and hopefully push them to, to get that done quickly because I agree that it's a throw for, through the city and it's, it's been in bad condition for some time now and that was hastened further by some of the work that was done on that road. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew, any more comments?
I had a couple. So it was brought to my attention by a resident that for the past few months, there's this large driller truck or part of a driller truck that's very large and it's been parked off music street on the left as you travel to the lookout. It's just past the overhead bridge carrying Route 81 over it. So I'm not sure whose it is, if it's the state's or what's going on up there. If you could please inquire and try to, try to get an answer for this resident. Thank you. And also, you know, we haven't heard from in a while is the study regarding Engine 10. So could we please reach out to administration and check the status of that? Thank you. And then it was brought to my attention, and what, which is fantastic and I've noticed in, in recent years that there's been a couple of groups that have formed and they're doing cleanups throughout the city, which is fantastic and I'm very happy to see it. I think we should encourage that and assist them in any way. But this group that, you know, and, and they, they truly love the city and I think their, their actual nickname they have for this group is Scranton Lovers are, are hitting a little roadblock with, roadblock with regards to not only cleaning, which they do every year and they want to, I think they start the process, but also they want another aspect to incorporate called beautification, which means they have some resources that are going to donate some flowers and they'd like, after cleaning up, planting some flowers in these areas. And some might be city-owned, some might not be, but, so, you know, they followed the protocol, which they thought was, was reaching out to the city to get permission, you know, ask for, you know, instead of forgiveness and because, you know, they weren't sure what the protocol is. I'm not sure what the protocol is because this is probably something new. But I know they started reaching out to the city in March. All right? So, and the responses they're getting is, well, we have to talk to a different department. And so now, the last time they heard was like three weeks ago that, you know, we'll get back to you. And then I asked Mr. Voldenberg to, you know, reach out to administration and their response was, well, we have to wait for OECD to make a decision. I, I don't know why we would need their permission, but, okay. With that said, I mean, you know, they want to start planning now, not June and July. This is the time to plan. And, you know, this should be a sense of urgency. We, like I said earlier, we should embrace and assist these groups that want to help. They shouldn't hit roadblocks or speed bumps with just getting a simple answer as to yes or no, they can do it, taking almost a month, which is ridiculous. So, you know, I think we, this should be, there's a little, should be a little, you know, sense of urgency because like I said earlier, time is their enemy right now. They're finding people that are gracious enough to donate flowers. They want to be able to coordinate this with their efforts after the cleanup. So I know you, you reached out and they said they're waiting upon approval from OECD, but that's a couple of days now. So could you please, let's get these people an answer.
I will. I'll follow up with the OECD director tomorrow.
Thank you very much. And that is all I have. And in response to Mr. Mark Gavage's, I wasn't sure what your question was at the end of your five minutes. I really didn't understand what you said or what the question was. So I know we can't engage right now with question and answer, but, I mean, I've always had a problem with lacking City Hall or restriction. You know, and there's a safer way to, there's a safer way to do it. There wasn't a discussion what the options would be because, you know, worried about files, worrying about safety, as we sit here right now, anybody can come up that elevator. You can go to the first floor, second floor, you can roam around. It could be happening right now, we wouldn't even know. So it's, it's, you know, it's a lot to have the restriction during the day and not at the night doesn't make sense to me. So if that's part of your question, I'm not sure, but, but that's how I always felt and that's how I continue to feel. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. So this week, there will be two emergency bids for demolition. They will be on-site of the, of the actual buildings that are going to be demolished. The one is on the 10th Avenue building that we heard from last week and the other one is 801 South Webster. So I assume they will be in the paper. They should be on the city website, but I got this information a short time ago. Also, 332 Birch Street, the garage that has all the chickens and the roosters, it is empty. I've seen it empty and I have a picture just in case. And it was said last week and a week before that we had a cyber attack. We did not have a cyber attack. We did not pay anybody for anything. No information was compromised. So that supposed attack really never happened. But we do carry insurance for something like that. If it does happen to the city, we do have insurance for that. The finance meeting from April 30th, the information from that is every department is on track and aligned with the overall budget. Parks normally is high overtime. That was because of the cold blue nights and all of the authorities actually now have auditors. So every one of them have auditors, so we should be on time this year to get our audit in on time. And the last thing from that was the year-to-date interest on taxpayer dollars is $147,453. And yes, we do make interest on taxpayer dollars, no matter what anybody tells you. The sinkholes, Mr. Schuster, I think you asked the price of that. I'd asked and they did tell me the two of them, 127 Line Jackson and 8 Fawnwood Drive. The price to repair both of those is $27,000. The bids came in at. They were happy at that. I, I don't know what the repair is, but, you know, I couldn't tell you anymore, but I know they were, I got the price. The other thing, they say for paving streets and all of the work that is being done on our streets, city council has approved the past three years of paving projects. So people come here and say, we don't pave it. You know, the mayor doesn't pave, you only pays for this. Well, we do all of that too. We approve all of that. So, and do we know how much it's gone? Yes, in '22 to '23, we put $2.68 million in paving in the city. And '23 to '24, $2.53 million was invested. And '24, '25, this year, there is $2.2 million. And again, this all went through council. This was all public information. So we are paving every single year. Now, our, our infrastructure, the streets, and I, and I understand that they're in deplorable conditions. I hate the road conditions, just like everyone else does. But year-to-date, well, in the past 29 months, I went back that far to find out how many streets, how many roads were actually torn up. There's actually 47 roads that were torn up by Pennsylvania American Water Company alone. The list for all of those streets is online. So every street that you see, you drive on and they're in horrible condition, they are there. But we are replacing the gas or the water mains. And believe it or not, our kids are still drinking water contaminated with lead. They are still pouring lead out. Two years ago, they did 30,000 linear feet of pipe. Last year, they did 30,000 linear feet of pipe. And this year, they have another 30,000 they're doing, they're already on track doing that this year. That's miles of pipe and that's miles of road destruction. But not only that, then UGI can come in behind them and replace their piping. So our infrastructure has to be built from the inside. So instead of allowing this to have UGI come in and PAWC come in, this is all happening at the same time. And then when this stuff is done, then we're in doing the stormwater. So we're in for another, a year or two of this. So if you're looking for smooth streets, it's really not going to happen for a bit because we are actually in the middle of this entire project. I'm glad we're doing it. I want the lead out of the pipes going into our houses that our children are drinking. So yes, I do agree the roads are terrible, but we do have to take care of them and replace that infrastructure. But it is being done. The other crosswalks I was told is going out to bids. DPW was sent a list of their own to do. The bids will only be for the ones that are high-traffic areas that are dangerous and require traffic control, either pieces, police or people to control the intersections. So I know we don't have that much manpower in our department. So that is it, Mr. Voldenberg.
5B for introduction, a resolution. Resolution for plan revision for new single-family homeland development located at 111 Monterey Road.
At this time, I entertain a motion that I am 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5C for introduction, a resolution. Appointment of Samantha Bode, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Environmental Advisory Council to fill the unexpired term of Robert Shoemaker, who resigned. Samantha Bode's term is effective upon execution of this resolution and will expire on July 31st, 2026.
At this time, I entertain a motion that I am 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed to council number 75, 2025, in ordinance. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city of Scranton and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for use of American Digital Cartography Inc. products.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
6B, reading by title, filed to council number 76, 2025, in ordinance. Ratifying and authorizing the execution of temporary construction easement agreements for parcels located at 2709 Jackson Street and 8 Fawnwood Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for the sinkhole repair project.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, filed to council number 72, 2025. Closing and abolishing inactive special city accounts.
What is the recommendation of the vice chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King? Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, filed to council number 73, 2025, to clean up the code ordinance of 2025. Removing outdated provisions of Scranton City Code, including the repeal or amendment of provisions regarding the printing of ordinances, sewer service rates, bicycle licenses, anti-litter account, alcoholism and drug abuse fund, parking fines, Board of Examiners, departments and abandoned refrigerators.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King? Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally, lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, filed to council number 74, 2025. Approving and authorizing the acquisition by easement agreements, deed in lieu of condemnation in lieu of condemnation or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements, or titles of land required for permanent and temporary easements in order to complete the North Scranton Stormwater and Drainage Improvements Project, Group 1, and authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking pursuant to Section 302 of the eminent domain code if required.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King? Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally, lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, resolution number 201, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials, including but not limited to the business administrator and fire chief, to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to enter into, consummate, execute a lease purchase agreement for a Ford Transit Van 350 with Community First National Bank.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
The question, roll call, please.
Mr. King? Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally, lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.